Okay, you're recording now.
Okay, it's 5:01 and I call the City of Cedar Valley Utility Committee meeting in order. And we'll do a roll call. I see Glenn Allen.
Here.
Kevin Loy.
Here.
Chuck Owen. Okay, and I see Chuck's there, so I'll go ahead and just turn it over to Mark now.
Thank you, Councilwoman Casti. So we have three items to talk about tonight. If you don't object, I would like to talk about the the thing that Leo is interested in, and that's the recycling program before we move on to the other two. Would that be permissible? Then we can let him go. So Leo has prepared a draft of a summary of where we're at on the recycling program right now. This is in response to Councilmember Owens' request a couple of meetings ago. And so Leo's worked very hard to come up with a a look at where we're at in terms of the overall world of recycling. And so Leo, would you like to just kind of give a summary of that and overview? And
Yes, I, yes, I can give a summary. Well, as Mark said, it was based on Councilman Owens mentioning that, you know, maybe we should take a look at recycling and maybe not doing it in the future. So I gave some choices here or just some points to look at. There's about five, five parts to it here. What I really came up with was every time I had a good idea on this, or maybe a way we could go, there was always, there was like a cause and effect. So if we, if we did one of the options, there was always a lot of other, other issues that could come up when doing it. So that's one of the points I'd like to make when, when you're reading this and looking at this document or this memo is just there's a, I mean, I worked really hard to see, to limit how many issues we could have with each of them, but it just, it kept kind of snowballing on each of them. There was like, boy, if we did this, then there was something else that would come up, or the cost would just be deferred to a different, a different way or a different part in the recycle system or the garbage system. So that, with, with that, it's you, you can see the five that I have here. It's a, you know, keep, should we keep the recycling program and pass on the cost to rate payers in the future? For the, oh, oh, there we go. Okay, I thought I lost you for a second. Number two is we could modify or hybrid a program to make it optional, like the yard waste program. Number three is we could direct rate payers to drop off at recycle centers if they wanted to, if we wanted to cancel the whole program. We could just refer them to recycle centers and just not collect it. Number four is discontinue the program and send it to the landfill. So with that, it would be, my thought would have been is we could just let everybody keep their recycle containers and just haul it to the landfill, which would be of some savings. And number five is modify to only take a paper products. So those were the five I came up with. Let's see. That, that's about a, that's about a summary of what I'm, what I did on the memo here. Did I lose everyone?
Nope, we're still here.
Oh, okay.
Memo, is it showing up on your screens?
Yeah, I can see it, Mark.
All right, good. Thank you. So Leo gave a short summary on that, and I guess the, the question is for the utility committee, do we want to take this to the full council? And do you have any preference on which way we go? Leo's recommendation is because of all the nuances that are involved here and, and the difficulty in, in kind of going backwards from what we've been doing for a number of years now, that we continue the program as is and make some of the moderate, modern, minor modifications that he mentioned in his summary there to improve what we're doing and give ourselves some more time to see how the market develops. We don't really in the short term expect this is going to improve. COVID hasn't helped matters with that any, but over the long term, it may settle out in some, some manner. The concern he's expressed to me, and I certainly would agree with this, is a lot of work to get this thing in place. And if we go backwards now and then in a year or two, the market comes back, we're going to be, it's going to be really hard to reestablish this again. There's going to be a, a lot of resistance, no doubt, from, from the public on, on trying to do that, going back and forth on that. That's, that's the basic recommendation that he has given us, and I, I think that is a prudent way to handle this at this point. Try to reduce the cost as best we can within the things that we have identified. And then just keep looking at this as we go and take another look at it next year.
Yes, Mark, if you don't mind, I'd like to add. So the, the recycling markets have been rebounding slightly, and that is some good news. Now, whether or not that's going to equal us getting a lower rate in the future, or if they just stabilize and only go up by the CPI, that's remains to be seen year by year. But we are seeing cardboard prices rebound. I'm just looking at some of the, the stuff that we've, we've gotten in. Glass is still zero, if not a cost in some places, depending on the color of glass. But metal prices have rebounded, so it's, it's not, not to the full way it was, but they are getting a little bit better, just for a little perspective there on how, what the recycle markets are doing.
Where, where is this project financially? Is this, is the year, did they lose money? Are they making money? What are they doing?
We are, oh, do you want me, I can answer. We are a little bit above break even on this at this point. And I, I would have to get, I'd have to look at it a lot closer than I could bring those numbers next time or, or send them out.
That would be a good thing to know because all my contacts tell me, you know, like you've got paper on there. Paper is the only thing that ever, ever makes money. And then once in a while, something will also pop up, but if you're just going to keep going, hoping the market's going to rebound, that's not sound, that's not sound business practices.
Right, exactly. The, the rate payers actually pay for the program right now, so it, through the recycle fees that we do, and that's why we raised it this year to make sure we cover all of our costs. So $4.64 is covering the cost of the, the system at this point.
So what, what, what some vendor pays you for the recycling doesn't even come close to paying for the program?
I'm sorry? Say again, please?
What, who, who do you sell your, your goods to? Who you selling the paper to?
Oh, well, right now, it, it's not a sale of paper. All the recycle products are, we're still using waste management for the processing. So we drop it off to them and they process it. So it is a fee for us.
So you don't get, so it doesn't it doesn't produce any income?
Not, not from the recycle product.
And Leo, I can maybe add in a little bit on that. You know, recycling has done a 180 the last, I'd say, four or five years. It used to be the day when we would bundle stuff up and sell it, and it was a revenue source. Well, that slowly faded out to where your hauler would haul it away. They would just charge you less than your normal waste stream. So you weren't making money, but you were saving money. And now it's changed completely the other way now, where it actually costs us more than the waste stream. So there was a time we used to be able to bundle those up as commodities and sell them and make money on them, but those days unfortunately have faded away.
Leo Glenn Allen here. I use your recycling area probably almost daily. I buy my beauty bark from you. I take glass. I take cardboard. Personally, I think it's one of the best things the city offers to their citizens. It's clean, it's run well. I can get rid of old batteries and all that stuff. I think that what we have, we should keep. There's going to be market deviations. You're not always going to make money. And if we close everything up and change everything, I would like, not like to drive down the river road because the county would have to hire two more employees with a dump truck to pick it up. So anyway, I, I think what you're doing is prudent. We can't control everything in the world. But I think what we can do is take responsibility, recycle where we can, get what we can, and hopefully the marketplace will change and we can make money. That's my spin and I'm sticking with it, okay?
I agree as well, Glenn. Leo, you did a really nice write-up here, and I, I agree with your recommendations, and I think we should go with that as well.
Okay, thank you.
So one thing that I didn't get in this final draft of the memorandum that Leo had in his original, I, I'd just like to bring to your attention just for general knowledge. The solid waste department's continuing to see the same pressure on their service as the rest of, the rest of the city's operations in terms of residential growth. We'll be talking more about what that growth's looking like for this year alone in a few minutes when talking about the facilities charges, but it's, it's fairly substantial. And there's, there's a lot of pressure on the city the growth mode, even in the midst of COVID. We, the builders never really slowed down here, and that's, that's continuing. So what that's going to do is at some time in the next couple of years, we're going to have to take a close look on our pickup capabilities in terms of both crew and, and equipment. And just wanted you to be aware of that, and we'll be talking about that more as, as time goes by. Leo's projection was that we may, might need to add a new driver as soon as 2022 and a newer used truck, used truck and we'll be looking carefully at that as the year goes along, and especially when we get towards budget time. That's something that, that we'll be addressing there with Doug and, and the mayor. And we'll no doubt want to talk to the committee again when that picture becomes clearer. So Leo, did I miss anything in, in what I said there?
Not at all. Thank you, Mark. Yeah, that, that explained it very well. Yeah, we're seeing the same pressures. I, I would like to add real quick on that recycle thing, on the recycle end of things. Why we think $4.94 is pretty expensive. I've been in communication with many of the cities on the recycling programs because, you know, I was tasked to see what everybody else was doing. And just for, just, just so you know, like Waste, or Mount Vernon is going to be seeing an increase of, their, their rates are going to be $10 to $12 per person, per recycling cart. So I, I think we've been very good. I run a tight ship here. Mark lets me run a tight ship. And I mean, we're, our rate is only $4.94. So anyway, I just wanted to give you a perspective on that, but um, thank you everyone for listening tonight.
So Leo, maybe just to flesh one other thing. I noticed in the memo that you talked about the fact that we have a number of customers that actually have more than one recycle cart. We're only charging one fee per residence or service right now, aren't we?
Yes, and, and Mark, yeah, that's what I did find at a lot of the other cities, and they are starting to move to a per cart charge. So right now, for $4.94, you could have as many 68 gallon carts as you want. I mean, we have some customers, bless their hearts, they have six, six carts, up to six carts. About 600 or more people have two carts, two or more carts. So that, that becomes a, like, do we let that, you know, continue, or should we go by, you know, charge them per cart, kind of similar to the, the garbage rates? And what we're seeing at the other cities is they're definitely heading that way. Probably 70% of the cities that I talked with are, are going to be charging or are charging now per additional cart. The same, the same rate, so $4.94. It'd be $4.94 if you had a second cart, $4.94 if you had a third cart. So it'd be, you know, it'd be three times the rate.
So right now, the wage rate is set up. It is covering that type, kind of, type of eventuality. Basically, everybody's paying the same. Some people have more, more carts, and it's actually quite a few of them. But you're covering the cost of the system by that $4.94 rate. You know, we're not actually subsidizing anything out of other city funds right now. But in terms of equity, it might be better to look at that rate the next time we adjust it and, and, and maybe go to a model of charging for each cart than you would think if we are just covering our costs, we would then reduce the rate somewhat. Would that be a fair thing to say?
Yeah, yeah, that would be great. Yeah, we could do, I can do the analysis with, with your help, and we can figure out a real nice rate system for the recycle, for the recycling curbside.
So, so out of our garbage bill, I can't remember, my wife pays the bill, so the four, not, $4.94 is the total that is out of my garbage bill for recycling. Is that correct?
Yes, yeah, yes, yes, it is, Councilman Loy.
Leo.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, go ahead. Are you still on, Kevin?
Yeah, I'm still here.
Okay, well, did you have, I'll, I'll get off if you have a question.
No, he answered my question.
Okay, anyway, Leo, a question for me is, I, I have a larger recycling and garbage now. And a different generation, what is the difference between a number two, like Folgers can, and a number one or two plastic? And my kids say, oh, they're all recyclable. And I know I went to the Day Creek place about two or three years ago, and I asked the gal, and she said, oh, just throw them all in. They all go to a landfill. So anyway, can you throw me in?
Well, the difference between number one and number two is, boy, I, I'm sure there's a, a sequence of how they make those things. I think it's probably polypropylene is number one. I, I mean, I don't want to butcher the names. So they both are recyclable, and those are actually the only plastics they're currently taking right now are the number ones and number twos. Now, everything else will, is going to the landfill or they're, you know, I'm not sure how those are getting recycled, probably into the trash, because number one and number twos are the valuable ones. So, but those are getting recycled. I have to say though, it's, it depends on what facility you're using. Some of them are having trouble to find markets for mixed materials like that. We're still okay. Waste management is doing it. I know the county's having a little bit of trouble trying to negotiate to get theirs, to get theirs recycled. So I'm sorry, they take it to the landfill, but ours are getting recycled at this point.
What percentage of our, our, our recycle ends up in the landfill?
Okay, um, I would say right now that we're probably about 5% of the materials according to waste management. Now, there are, there are occasions where we see heavy contamination in our curbside, and we adjust our service accordingly. So if the driver sees over 5% going in, waste could subs, could charge us an additional fee if we, if it's a lot of garbage. So our driver has to make a good decision if he dumps, dumps 100 cans, and 50 of them are full of styrofoam, which is a really, that, we always see that in there. Or, you know, just, you know, plain garbage or bags full of garbage or yard waste, then he makes a decision, or he'll call me and say, what do I do? And sometimes we'll have to run that to the landfill because I, we don't want to incur a surcharge of an extra 100. I, it's pretty substantial. So, but right now, I'd say overall about 5% on an average for a yearly average is about 5% goes to the landfill.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
So I would ask the committee, what is your, what is your preference on this? Do you want this to go to the full council? Do you want to report this out? How, how would you like this to go forward?
I'd like to see it go to the council.
I'm seeing nodding of heads, so we'll do that. We'll prepare that for an upcoming council then. Thank you very much. And Leo, you can sign out now, and thank you for being the man of the hour here. It's appreciated.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Have a great night.
Okay, I'm going to try to bring up another screen share right now. Let me know if you're seeing the memorandum for family general facilities charges. Okay, we are. All right, so I, I've got this up for reference, and I am, I'm also, I have a separate memo that I might switch to in a minute. So anyway, the background on this is that we were approached by one of our local developers, one of the major ones, about the cost of our multifamily general facilities charge for our sanitary sewer utility. They brought to our attention that, that, or actually, they stated to us that we are a high-cost provider for this particular charge in relation to the other agencies in the area. My response to them was is the only way we would know that is to do a, an area-wide comparison, and I didn't feel free to do that at the city's expense, so I told them if they paid for it, we'd do a comparison, and then I would bring that information to the council for your consideration, and that's where I, that's what I'm doing tonight is starting that process. To go forward from here, there's a number of things you can do. You can, you can choose not to change anything from what we're doing now, and I'll talk about that in a minute. Or you can choose to go through the process of, of an ordinance that would modify our existing sewer utility funding. So those are the choices we have. Tonight after I present, would like to get your feeling about that, whether we should proceed with this, whether you would like to report it out to the council and then proceed or let it drop. So, so here we go. So Katie Isaacson, you're familiar with that, those of her, those who've been on the council a while, has done, well, ever since I've been here at least, she's done our annual sewer utility rate review. Now, we use that to make sure that we have enough funding come in to cover both the operation and maintenance and to allow for the future improvements of both our collection system and our wastewater treatment plant system. And we have two components in that. The O and M, the just operation and maintenance, we cover by rate revenue. And then the expansion part of the plant, when that becomes necessary. And you heard my spiel on the sewer comprehensive plan at the work session. That's coming down the road. That would be covered roughly 60% by general facilities charges, which are basically the sewer name for impact fees that would, would cover new growth caused by development, and then the rest is covered by rate revenue. So, and that's, Doug had a nice presentation he did over in Oak Harbor with some RCW references. I didn't bring those for you tonight, but if you'd like that information, I can certainly provide that. Katie noted in her memo that our general facilities charges are to represent fair and equitable share of the cost of the existing and planned improvements in the system for a 10-year period. And I noted we annually review this, and Katie's been doing that for us. And the last time we did that was in November of 2020. And that's when you adopted the new rates and, and general facility charges that were effective on January 1st of this year. So that's kind of a basic background. In our financial plan that we did as a part of the sewer plan this year, which served the purpose of our rate adjustment also, the same plan, we allowed for an average of 60 equivalent residential units or ERUs per year for a total of 60, 600 over the period 2020 to 2029. So that's kind of our, our testament of how the city's going to grow. And we did that by allowing for four years, it's 75 connections a year, and another six years of 50, and that adds up to the 600, which over a 10-year period is an average of 60 per year. We have in the past, and this especially came to fore in the recession in 2008, endeavored to be somewhat in tune with our neighboring agencies in terms of our rates and our impact fee charges. And I've done for council a number of times over the years, comparisons of what those are. This kind of falls into that nature again. I, I did a similar comparison when we did the last sewer rate adjustments. But one thing I didn't look at, at that time, was how multifamily was handled as in relation to our fees. And what we found with Katie's review is they're handled in a number of different ways. And let's see, I think what I'm going, no, I can do it with the verbal. Basically, she summarized, there's basically three ways that they do that. Let's see if I can find it. Here we go. Table one shows this. We have five of our sister agencies, Oak Harbor, Bellingham, Stanwood, Arlington, and Concrete, that do it by meter size. Basically, that's water meter size. And that's a little problematic for Cedar Woolley because we do not run the water utility, so we have to get any figures like on water usage from the PUD. We do do that for our commercial service accounts. We build them based on actual usage from water. That would be a bit more difficult for residential, and in the past, and Councilmember Loy will remember this, there was quite an extensive discussion on this about four or five years ago, and, and we did a, did a comparison and what that would look like. And it was decided not to move forward with that. So we've stuck with our basic connection GFC charge per unit, per residential unit. The second one is what we currently do, plus Eversin, LaConner, and Marysville, and that's based on a single-family residential unit. And the third way for multifamily is less than the single-family unit by various ways. And you can see in the five choice, five different agencies there that they're done different among all of them. Anacortes, they do a single-family and then a duplex at the single-family rate, but everything else is at eight tenths of a unit. Burlington does something sort of similar, but it's four, over four units. So that would cover single-family. Duplexes and triplexes are all considered under the single-family rate. And then anything over four units is, again, eight tenths. Mount Vernon does single-family only at their base rate. They do duplexes at .75. Multifamily, anything over three is at .5. Blaine does multifamily as three plus at .85, and then Linden has this multifamily is considered three to four units at .75, and then anything over five at .63. So they're, they're all over the board on how they do this. As I already mentioned, it'd be very difficult for us to do, or even compare with how it's done for meter size. I, I spent some time on the phone with Katie this afternoon trying to figure out what that might look like for one of them. And it all depends on a lot of different factors, and it depends heavily on how big the building is, how many units. And it just became basically impossible to do in, in any kind of short time to, to add that to the comparison. So what I did is I did a comparison on the ones that do it the same as us, and the ones that do multifamily according to these various ways that are shown here. And now I am going to try to change my screen. So grab, give me just a second. And see here. I did a, a variety of ways of looking at this with I did a, a variety of ways of looking at this with the agencies that were in those two classes I talked about. In the first three columns here, we have single-family duplex and triplex for the agencies. And they're basically sorted according to how many units I was looking at. I looked at several different comparisons. The one that I have up here is the twenty-unit comparison. The numbers in this first yellow column are, are the total general facilities charge calculated based on whatever methodology that particular agency uses. That's, this is what it would be, best I understand it for, for instance, a twenty unit, multi-family unit. And then I show the difference from what Cedar Woolley would charge. And then I've got a percentage over here that shows how much variation there is from what we do. So you can see that the low-cost provider in this world is LaConner and that we're about two hundred and fifty percent higher than them. And, and in fact, as you look down through this, one thing that'll be obvious to you, with the existing way we do it, we are the high-cost agency right now. If we were doing an approval for a twenty lot, I mean, excuse me, a twenty-unit multi-family building, our charge would be around a hundred and seventy thousand dollars for that. And you can see the variation in here. And the next closest to us is Blaine and then Anacortes, Anacortes being in Skagit County as we are. Over in the left-hand column is our basic single-family charge. You can see that varies quite a bit among agencies too, with LaConner being the low cost. Cedar Woolley is not the high cost in this particular comparison. I can show you what that looks like. I have it sorted by that here. We're, we're basically about seven of the ten agencies that I show here with Blaine and Anacortes being higher than us. We're at eighty-four ninety-five. So moving back to, down to this comparison, you can see there is, there is some concern about being this high just from, do we want to be the highest provider in the area? That, that's kind of a, a council thing to think about. I know in the past, as I mentioned during the recession, we didn't want to be in that bar, that boat. We wanted to be somewhere, you know, not in the low end, but in the mid to upper end of that. So that's one consideration. The other one is, there is a lot of growth going on right now. And I'll just say upfront that we have right now with what I just checked with planning last week, we have a hundred and sixty-seven. We have basically three applications right now that would add up to a hundred and sixty-seven multi-family units in the city that have already applied for building permits. That is, that is a huge influx of those things. And then we have another seventy-two that we know of that are likely to come our way this year. So it's, it's a very pertinent discussion right now to look at this. I will say upfront that none of them, but one have complained about this particular issue. In other words, they know what their rates are be, would be and, and are no doubt looking at that in terms of their financial planning. And haven't, haven't complained about that. That's one factor or another factor to, to keep in mind. Let's see. Just maybe one or two more comments on this. I did, for the sake of being able to discuss it, if the council did want to adjust our rate to bring us down a little bit, I, I took Burlington and, and Anacortes as the model. And I said, what would it look like if we did go to eighty percent for units over a triplex side? In other words, if we left single-family duplex and triplex as all figured by a single-family, what would it look like if after four units, similar to the Blaine model? That, what would that look like? And, and this gray one would be what that would look like if it was eighty percent. That would change us from being the high-cost provider to being back in the upper, upper echelon, but, but under Anacortes and Blaine. So you can see the numbers there. We would be in the neighborhood of, of a hundred and thirty-five thousand for that. And it would cost, for instance, in Anacortes, that same twenty-unit complex would cost a hundred and forty-six thousand. I will say about this that it's much more sensitive on the higher number of units that are in the complex. If you're down around a five or a ten-unit complex, the difference between us and, and Anacortes for instance is fairly minor. But when you get up into the ten, the difference is, is higher. It goes from, you know, three thousand to ten thousand for that. And, and what we're seeing right now with the permits, we've got four that are coming in the lower-end range, which the difference is not going to be that major, maybe seven or eight percent. And then we have two that are sixty-plus units. They're going to be even larger difference than you see here. I would say another thing about this, just going into what defines or what will drive the system improvements that we will need to do in the future. And looking back to the presentation I did on our sewer plan is flow. We're, we're regulated by flow and then, then by biological treatment. Our study has demonstrated to us is we're going to run out of capacity before we run out of treatment capability. At least after we've made these changes that we're proposing for the next three or four years. And flow is something that is directly related to how many human beings are in a unit. And there is a differentiation between multi-family and single-family in that regard. The Office of Financial Management, OFM, keeps, keeps track of our population figures. And one of the things that we know based on the most recent figures is that for our average residential units in Cedar Woolley, we have about two point five nine people on an average in each residential unit. For multi-family, it's a little less than two. It's one point nine six. And those are different by about twenty-four percent. And that directly impacts flow. So basically to simplify that, if I can, a, a, a single-family resident, and we, we generally allow about a hundred gallons per person per day, is going to produce about two hundred and fifty-nine gallons of wastewater going down the pipes to the treatment plant. A multi-family, average multi-family would produce about a hundred and ninety-six gallons. Again, that's that twenty-four percent. So whether we have our general facility charge set up at a hundred percent of a single-family or eighty percent, that, that's a dollar question. But in terms of flow, you actually have less impact from multi-family on flow per unit than you do for single-family. And that's an important consideration to know. So in that regard, it is somewhat scientifically accurate to say that a multi-family unit should have a, a less impact on the treatment system and then could conceivably be said to have a lower general facilities charge responsibility for the upgrade of the system. That's true. And I think that's why many agencies do reflect that by allocating a percentage of the single-family charge for multi-family. There is an argument to make there. As, as I talked about in the introduction though, not everybody looks at it the same. And I can't really tell you how that works out with meters. But for us and the three other agencies that just use the same, we're one way of doing it. Another way is the, the various percentages they use of the general facilities charge. As I talked this over with Katie earlier today, we went through the logic on this. And she agreed with me that, you know, flow is not going to be really the, the reason for your decision on this. It's going to be more, if you think it's more fair for multi-family to reflect the lower flow that's coming out in how you calculate your general facilities charge. Now, that example I used of eighty percent is one that I think is something that makes some sense in terms of the data. Again, it's about twenty-four percent less flow from multi-family on average than it is for a single-family. And so that eighty percent that Anacortes and Burlington are using makes some sense in that regard. What Mount Vernon's doing with their five-plus units at fifty percent doesn't make any sense. That seems to me like they are subsidizing single fam, uh, multi-family at the expense of single-family. Katie did mention to me that there are agencies that have seen a great growth in their multi-family units. There's a lot of reasons for that, cost is one. But she thinks that there is some, some movement among other agencies to look carefully at their general facilities charges to make sure they're not actually skewing the, the, the way that's done in favor of multi-family. It's a policy decision on your part on that. But basically our growth management requirements, we do have to allow for a certain amount of multi-family in our planning. And we've done that. And so these developments that are coming to us now, they fit within what we have in our comprehensive plan and that we're allowing for. It's, it's not something that you could say, oh, I don't want to have multi-family because that would go against what we're required to allow for in the Growth Management Act. So I think it's, 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 it's an interesting discussion to have, how we want to look at this. On a basic fairness factor or looking at flow, I should say, it probably should be something less than one, one point oh for multi-family. And that's, that's what I would suggest to you is we should do something around eighty percent. But it's a policy decision that's totally up to council on how you want to look at that. From a dollar standpoint, from us being ready when we start planning for that wastewater treatment facility in seven to ten years, we're better off to leave it as is because we'll have more money in the bank. But I would say that with the growth we're seeing, either way, we're going to have a good war chest going into that. We are growing faster than we anticipated, at least in the short term. And what that's going to do, that's going to put more money upfront in general facilities charges into our account to make sure we're ready when we go to do that expansion coming up. Either way, that's going to be true. The dollar differential that I found, for instance, in this multi-family comparison that we have here, if we went to this charge, for instance, excuse me, I'm going to look at a different screen here and give you that, that number. Go down here and look at this. Okay, so here, here are the potential connections up to two hundred and thirty-nine, but let's just look at a hundred and sixty-seven. That's what we know about. If we left it as is, as we charged today at a one point oh, single-family residence, we would have a million four in general facilities charges coming in to represent those hundred and sixty-seven units. If we reduced it to eighty percent, it would be a million one. The difference is two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. I did another one for eighty-five percent just for comparison purposes. So upfront, potentially from those units, we would collect two hundred and eighty-four thousand less than we would if we left it as it is today. That's a lot of money. There's no questions about that. And this is only maybe the start of this as we go downstream, although we don't have a huge amount of inventory and spaces where there could go multi-family in. And I think we're seeing a lot of, a lot of that is developing right now. But anyway, that's, that's the dollars that we're looking at.
Mark, I have a question. So I like where we're at now, but does this, am I also hearing that we could also raise the rate of a single-family home then as well? If it's not like if.
Yeah, you, you do that. We, we did that recently when we adopted rates, the rate, the new rates in November that I mentioned earlier. We raised it up eighty-four ninety-five for single-family. And what our, our financial plan in the sewer comp plan recommends is that we look at that annually and we raise it at least by the, the Consumer Price Index every year. And we've been, council's been faithful to do that the last number of years. And we will want to continue to do that because that's what makes our financial plan work. Okay, so really the question for you tonight is, do we want to look at bringing down the multi-family rate to be more in tune with our sister agencies? Yeah, which will obviously make us a little more attractive for development. Although we're seeing significant pressure today without that. So that's, that's really the question for you, if you'd like that to go forward at all. And let me see if I missed anything in my ramblings there. Yeah, just, just to reiterate, there is a dollar cost to this in, in terms of potential flow. But I am not particularly concerned about that, the fairness and, and being able to defend what we do, I think is more important. And I think there is some argument to be made to make sure that Cedar Woolley is not the high-cost provider in the county. That's not my call though. That is, that is clearly in your purvey rather than mine. I, I just wanted to bring this before you. It was requested by one of our developers. But it will obviously benefit more than one. There's, like I said, there's six, six potential permits that we'll see in twenty twenty-one that are, are involved in this. So any questions?
I'd like to stay as is. How about you Glenn and Kevin? You're muted Glenn. Still muted.
Okay, I'm no fan of, of big government spending, but my outlook on this is, number one, we just talked about in six years how we're going to need twenty million dollars to build, rebuild or build a new plant, whichever way it happens to be. So, and it's quite obvious that whatever you lower it today is going to have to go back up tomorrow. And, and he said, there's only been one, one developer that complained. That's a good sign when you get everybody, a system that people accept. They may not like it, but they will accept that. That's a good sign. But when one complaint, when, one developer that's complaining, it, it doesn't pass the test for me.
Glenn?
You're still muted, muted. Glenn, you're still muted.
Probably having the same problem I did last week.
So anyone, my, my suggestion is I like what, what Joel and said, just keep it as is. But I think it should go to the city council so, so they know what's going on.
How do I unmute? There's a microphone with the, with the line. Hit it. It won't work. Cedar Woolley charades.
Might have to log out.
Am I on now?
Yes.
Yes, you are.
All right, thank you. I'm, I'm with Kevin and I was going to ask Mark, is it hurt development? No. Is there one complainer? Yes. The sewer plant is going to cost twenty million dollars. Are they going to impact it? Yes. I think if our rates are not hurting us, it is kind of like salaries for in city employees, I'm sorry. If Bellevue's making so-and-so and they're the highest, then Cedar Woolley wants to match theirs. You know, I mean, it, it's a, it's cyclical, will be the highest maybe for a week and, or a year. And then we'll be in the mid-range for the next five years. So I, I think what we have is working. That's, I'm, I'm happy with what we have.
Mark, does it need to go to council if we just all decided that, just to let them know what's going on, but?
I think you could, or you could give us some direction on that. But I believe you could just report out that I brought this to you and that decided as a consensus in the committee to, to remain as is. And if they want it to break, be brought to the full council, we certainly can do that. And if they wanted to break, be brought to the full council, we certainly can do that. This is kind of a complex thing to try to cover in a council meeting. That's on it, but we could do it in a work session. So that's
It's, it's our choice what we do. And actually, I would be, I would be satisfied if we just left it right here and let it go.
As would I.
I agree.
Okay, and I know we're running out of time here, so let me move on to the last one, which is very similar. We also did a study last year. It's been basically setting gathering dust. We had a proposal for a seventy five space RV facility on Fruitdale that came to us in late twenty nineteen that due to some other reasons didn't move forward. The, and it, it is a permissible use at the location that was proposed. The way we would normally calculate general facilities charges for an RV facility would be by fixture count. So I, I gave the potential developer an estimate of what those fees would be for a seventy five lot thing. And it's a pretty high number and it actually is, is increased by the fact that we have a special connection fee on Fruitdale of about thirty four hundred and fifty dollars. And so it almost doubled the amount per space they would have to pay, but that's just the way it is. They asked me if there was some other way this could be figured. And I said, well, we were at the time looking at ADUs, excess necessary dwelling units. Some agencies use rates that are more down in the range of what we ended up adopting as the city for ADUs. And you might remember for units that are four hundred and fifty square foot and less. We have a point three of a single family residence GFC, general facilities charge. And then for ones that are over that were point six one. And we did that kind of a factor for both the transportation impact fees and for, and for the general facilities charge for sewer for ADUs. One could make the case that at a, a RV would be equivalent to an ADU. I wanted to bring that before you and just see if you were interested in looking at it that way. I actually do not recommend that for a couple of reasons. First and foremost, maybe this is not a fair thing to say, but I'm not sure having a seventy five lot RV unit in the city is all that great a thing anyway. And, and while it is permissible where it's at, I don't think we want to encourage it any more than, than, than they're already, already eligible to be encouraged, okay, which, which would be based on fixture counts. That's my feeling about it. And so I, I don't know if we need to spend a lot more time on it. I think with, with the tenor of what the committee just said about the discussion on multifamily, this is very similar to that. I think we're better off if they did decide to go forward, to go forward at the, at the rate that they would have to pay anyway. And that one, by the way, ended up at point four two. That, that's what the calculation was based on an average sized RV with ten fixture units and it came into point four two. So it's, it's still quite a bit less, it's less than half of what a single family residence would be. But it would be more than the small sized ADU, which is more physically in tune with what would you would get for a travel trailer type of thing. So anyway, that's for your consideration. If you want me to take that any farther, I will. But if you're satisfied with leaving it as is, I would say that would be a good answer.
I'd be satisfied with leaving it as is.
Yeah, table it.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, Glenn?
Uh, yeah, if you can hear me.
We can hear you.
Okay, yeah, it's, you know, I, I think the way we have things right now is just swell.
Okay, well.
Hey Mark, I have a question before we get off. Is any of this, did you want to be brought to the, anything to talk about for the council tonight in the reports or anything? Or you'll take care of that?
It would probably be best for you to report it out as the chair of the committee. And, and you can call on me to do any explaining you want me to do.
Is there anything you want me to report on?
Well, I, I would mention we had this discussion on, on both multifamily and, and RV and on, in relation to the sewer facilities charges. And then we also had a follow-up discussion on the solid waste recycling thing. And you can tell them that we will come to the full council with the solid waste recycling thing. And then what your recommendations were on the other two, which was not to change anything.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. I'll see you guys all at the next meeting.
Okay, well, I am going to try to get on the city cap. My computer is all souled up right now, so I'm